All right. Good evening and welcome to the April 28, 2025, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for the implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. And with that, I will move on to the roll call. Commissioner Peruzzi, here. Commissioner Doe, present. Vice Chair Eric is absent. Commissioner Farrick, here. Commissioner Sullen.
Present.
Commissioner Silverstein is also absent, and both Vice Chair Eric and Commissioner Silverstein notified staff and the commission ahead of time. I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. So we have five commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum. So I will move on to Section C, our reports and announcements component of the agenda. Ms. Sandmeyer, good evening. Are there any staff reports or announcements for the commission this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Schindler and commissioners. I have one update. Tomorrow evening at its meeting, the city council will make appointments for all vacancies on the advisory bodies. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about that announcement? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. We'll move on. Do commissioners have any reports or announcements? Okay. We will just pause for just a moment because it sounds like Commissioner Farrick does have a brief announcement. Any other announcements? All right, we'll sit tight.
Okay, I'm ready.
Please, Commissioner Farrick.
Sorry about that. I didn't have it queued up. As you may know, May is Affordable Housing Month, and one of the convenient entities that works on this issue is called SV at Home, and they convene a number of events. And there's a policy lunch, Affordable Housing Policy Lunch coming up that is a very affordable cost to attend, so I wanted to share that with fellow commissioners and members of the public who may be interested. It is this Friday at 11 to 1:30 at Santa Clara University, and the details are available on the Silicon Valley At Home website if you would like to register.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Is that event also open to members of the public who may be interested, in addition to our planning commissioners?
It is.
Excellent. Thank you. Seeing no other reports or announcements from other planning commissioners, we will move into the next section of our agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. So to learn how to participate in our general public comment, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk this evening, Mr. Pruder, to explain how you can participate, and then please, to begin our public comment period.
Thank you and good evening, Chair Schindler, planning commissioners, and members of the public. For tonight's items, starting with this public comment item, you're welcome to participate by raising your hand if you're on the Zoom interface, on the Zoom application. And if you're calling by phone, you are welcome to press star nine, and in either case, that will indicate to us that you would like to speak. For members of the public in person, please feel free to fill out a comment card and provide that to me, and I'll make sure that you are able to provide public comment on the respective item you'd like to speak on. At this time, I don't see any hands raised, but I'm happy to wait a moment longer before you close, if you'd like. Thank you.
I think we have given plenty of time. It turns out that people lingering outside the door did not want to come in and comment publicly, so I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda, and move us on to the consent calendar portion of our agenda. In our consent calendar this evening, there are two items. They are the meeting minutes for the March 24, 2025, and the April 14, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Pruder, could you please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Sure thing. Thank you, Chair Schindler. Again, public comment opportunity for the consent items listed as item E. We can wait a moment longer, but again, if anyone in person would like to speak, please provide me with a comment card. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand, pressing the hand icon, or pressing star nine if you're calling by phone. And I still see no hands or indication for speaking. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for checking. I'm comfortable closing public comment period for our consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no requests, we can move on to a motion, or end a second, hopefully, if we have commissioners who are willing to take those actions for the consent calendar. I have a first from Commissioner Sullen, yes?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Farrick, to approve the consent calendar with the two items on it as submitted in the staff report. I'll go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullen?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So the motion to approve the consent calendar passes with five votes and two absences. All right, moving on to Agenda Section F, the public hearing component of our meeting, which has two items in it. The first item, item F1, is with regard to the Development Agreement Annual Review for the Springline Development, which will be given by Presidio Bay Ventures. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to determine that Presidio Bay Ventures has demonstrated good-faith compliance with the terms of the Development Agreement for the period of April 2024 to April 2025 for the Springline project at a 1300 El Camino Real. Review of the Development Agreement does not qualify as a project under SEQA. Ms. Sandmeyer.
Excuse me.
Apologies. You are our staff leader on this topic this evening. Are there any updates to the staff report? And I believe we also have the applicant would like to make some just comments before we get into clarifying questions and public comment, please.
Yes, thank you. There is one update. So the staff report, the timeline for the sales tax obligation was incorrect in the staff report, so it is prorated for the first year, and that's reflected in the updated letter from Presidio Bay Ventures. They also updated the letter to clarify that all 20 BMR units are currently rented, and I believe that information was in the staff report. So we left copies of the updated letter on the dais for the commissioners, and also in the back of the room for anyone who's interested in a copy. That concludes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that there are a couple of folks from Presidio Bay who perhaps wanted to make, just I understand, potentially opening remarks, but with not necessarily a presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct, commissioners. Can folks hear me?
We can. Thank you. Please.
Perfect. Good evening, and thank you so much for your time. My name is Cyrus Anandaji, and we're honored to be here this year, once again, to share with you our latest developments at Springline, and really to extend our continued gratitude to the city of the community and everyone else that's really embraced Springline and helped to make it a cornerstone of Menlo Park, and contributed to the sort of mutual symbiotic relationship that we've been forming here. I didn't want to spend too long on this, but really just wanted to echo that each year we've continued to strive, and this past year was no different, to exceed what original commitments were made in the Development Agreement, and I think not just in the original DA, but even in the re-entitlement or updated entitlements that we came and sought from this body and from city council, to allow the project to get fully occupied and to become an active, vibrant part of the community. So with that, looking forward to answering any questions that you or the public may have, and turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move into public comment on item F1, do any planning commissioners have clarifying questions for staff or for, excuse me, our developer representative? I am not seeing any hands raised. I did have, I had identified a couple coming into this evening's discussion. However, the first one was addressed by the updated letter that clarified how many of the BMR units are occupied, the answer being 20, confirming that. And then my second question was with regard to the calculation of the guaranteed sales tax revenue. I appreciate the addendum, or the notice here that it would be prorated for the first year, and I am also just wanting to seek confirmation that the CPI indexing would have already occurred and was reflected in the numbers that we're seeing here. Is that correct?
Yes, the updated number is in the staff report. The only thing that wasn't in the staff report is that the first year is prorated, since the event that triggered the guarantee occurred in August instead of June.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other clarifying questions, Mr. Pruder, could you please open up public comment on item F1?
Thank you again, Chair Schindler. At this time, we have public comment for item F1. Members of the public in person can provide me with a comment card to speak on this item, and also those who are attending virtually can press the hand icon on Zoom to indicate a desire to speak on this item, and anyone on the phone, calling by phone, can press star nine on their keypad to also request to speak publicly. And at this time, I see no hands raised and no comment cards, so we can wait a little longer, or if you'd like, close public comment. Thank you.
All right. As we have no hands raised, no comment cards, and we think the ducks are not speaking about this particular topic. For those online, the ducks are going crazy outside. So we will bring it back to the dais for commission discussion, and ultimately a motion regarding if the developer, Presidio Bay Ventures, has demonstrated good-faith compliance with the terms of the Development Agreement for the period described. Comments or general questions from commissioners? Commissioner Peruzzi? I just have a quick one for the developer, and this is not, I mean, this doesn't really affect my vote tonight, but I'm curious about the Canopy Coffee, and there was a comment that the developer did not think that replacing it with a different community-facing business would actually be effective. And I was curious about whether or not you have any hypotheses about why this wasn't as successful as it could have been at that location, just sort of so we can learn, as we think, moving forward, about how to make sure that we can do a good job with our mixed-use projects. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Peruzzi. It's a great question, and one that we obviously struggled with, given the immense pride we've taken in cultivating an active retail landscape and sort of merchandising plan at Springline to really contribute to, and rather than compete with downtown and the retailers on Santa Cruz. And so, as we went around and curated the lists of operators that we brought to the project, both in terms of cuisine and offering, but also in terms of the diversity of the operators, we thought that there would be greater demand and foot traffic as it related to what would otherwise be considered sort of more of a community-serving amenity, in the true sense of sort of a passive convenience, as opposed to a destination. So think of our Italian restaurant, or the Burmese restaurant, and so on. Those are truly destinations that people are seeking out. Our sushi restaurant are soon to open, you know, fantastic Mexican restaurant, and so on. So I think the key really for us was that, and what we realized, and then subsequently, since Canteen's closure, and you'll note that they close both in the, within the Canopy space on El Camino, and also in Oak Grove, in the, at 550 Oak Grove. We've spent extensive time in the market, speaking with operators, trying to backfill the space, and candidly, it really just ended up being more of a square peg round hole, where we were trying to force something, and despite extremely heavy subsidy, we're not confident in the ability of a standalone retailer of that proportion, of that size, to be able to become a destination, for one. And then, two, just as a broader lessons learned, which we're hoping to come and present additional projects, which some of you may have seen in the news recently, assuming everything progresses, that our view on retail, if there's a lessons learned, would have been that the initial premise, which was a clear planning consideration, which everyone obviously agreed to, but our original premise was that you line all the main thoroughfares with street-facing retail, and that that community-facing retail is actually what's going to drive foot traffic. Well, with a project this large, the issue is that you end up spreading it over such a long sort of frontage, both along El Camino and Oak Grove, rather than having a concentrated node where that sort of foot traffic and the ability to funnel foot traffic and just people would end up driving additional sales for all of the retailers that would have been congregated in one concentrated area. So as it relates to sort of that particular corner on El Camino at the entrance of the project, we don't feel that there's viability for a true standalone retail use. That said, we do plan on imminently submitting an application through planning, which may end up in front of this body, to expand Canopy's event programming and just incubator space, essentially to recapture the cafe portion, because that has been a big driver of the public visiting the project and actually participating in events and programming that Canopy hosts, which is open to the public. So it serves the original intent of that space being public-facing. It's just going to take a different form, and you know, it won't be through, you know, the sales of food and beverage or other merchandise, but more through the sale of service and programming and events, which should drive more foot traffic, and in turn, benefit the other restaurants that are actually on the premises.
I see. Thank you. That makes sense. A quick follow-up. So what about the Oak Grove frontage with the, I don't think I'd realized that that canteen had also closed. Is that an easier sell, or is that, do you have plans for that one? Or maybe it said this in their letter, and I didn't?
I'm not sure that we actually put it in the letter, because it's not a signed deal yet, but we're very excited. We've had very positive discussions and are actually exchanging lease drafts at the moment with a fantastic operator who would take over that space. We have some cleanup to do on our ABC licensing, and would again come back to this body for a minor correction to the highlighted space that was otherwise the dining room for Canteen, which hadn't been covered in the Menlo Park planning documents as showing as retail restaurant, even though that's what it had been permitted for. So with that minor correction, that space is actually very viable, and we're optimistic that in the next month or so, we'll have a signed lease with the operator, and we'll be really excited to announce that to the community, and it'll be complimentary to all the other restaurants that are on the premises.
Great.
There is one other, sorry, just I think this is pertinent to the canteen conversation on El Camino. The market, the Mercado, Caifico Mercado had, also is going through a slight pivot at this point. Again, I think a testament to both our operators and, you know, our commitment to ensuring that we actually maintain these spaces as vibrant storefronts, but Caifico Mercado is doing a pivot. It had, over the last year or so, seen a significant ramp up in catering demand, and so there was always a catering kitchen that was a central part of that concept, but leaning into that. And then, rather than having it be a, you know, grab-and-go specialty market, you know, grocer, we're pivoting that so that there's actually in-house dining and similar, so again, Mediterranean-themed, but whereas previously you would go and get a sandwich or some prepared foods at the counter, you know, deli-style, and then go and sit down. This would be more fast casual, while maintaining the aspects of that operation and concept that were successful. So the catering remains, the gelato window, which I know with Foster's Freeze's tradition was sort of a big deal for everyone in the community. That stays, but there'll be more of a fast-casual dining experience as well. Again, Mediterranean-themed, so not the same as Caifico, the Italian restaurant, but a broader, broader offering there, which we hope, again, sort of fills a need that we haven't seen, not just in Menlo Park, but sort of in the surrounding areas as well.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Sullen?
Thank you. Through the chair, there's a question for staff, just regarding the scope of this review. So there's like a 20-page legal document, that's the Development Agreement, and then there's sort of, in my view, a shorter list of, I believe, six items that, or sorry, five items that, you know, are obligations from the developer, public amenity fund, dog park, et cetera. Is the scope of tonight simply to review those five items only, or is it the Development Agreement as a whole? And I guess, and a follow-up question to that, like, the discussion we're having now about the community benefits, which aren't on this list, like, such as restaurants, et cetera, does that part of the scope of this, or is it just for information purposes?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the Development Agreement and the community benefits, those were all reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council, and have been approved. So tonight's meeting is just to review the developer's obligations and make sure, and it's for the Planning Commission to review if they agree with staff's recommendation that the developer is meeting these obligations.
Okay, just the five listed, and not any of the other, like, legal stuff, I guess, because to me, in the 20-page agreement, there are other things that aren't part of these obligations. Is that under the scope of tonight's meeting? Not that I'm looking to question them in particular, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I, hmm, that's a good question. I think we've, these are the five that have been identified. If there's other specific obligations you'd like to discuss, I think that can certainly be brought up.
Okay. Maybe another way to phrase my question is, in your view, Ms. Sandmeyer, because the letter from the developer in the discussion right now is about, you know, what's happening with the Canopy space and restaurants coming in and out, is that in the scope of the Development Agreement in some fashion, or is that just like kind of for our information?
If I may, I'm happy to just weigh in. So the, in terms of any ongoing obligations vis-à-vis the Development Agreement, the ongoing compliance, really at this point, given how many years out we are, is related simply to the sales tax make-whole concept, just purely from an economic perspective. We provided, so you'll see four of those five rows in the table were shown as completed. We kept those on, even though they were completed more just as a courtesy for context for the commission, but in terms of the go-forward, the only ongoing sort of evergreen obligation is the, is the sales tax obligation, which is a simple sort of math calculation, and that hasn't started yet, as we mentioned at the onset. So all of this discussion was more for added context, just given we will be coming back to the commission for some of those minor adjustments and cleanup items.
Okay. Thank you for that. I wanted to just briefly comment, but I'll wait till the commissioners have a chance to answer, ask their questions. Thank you.
I very much appreciate Commissioner Peruzzi's question about just wanting to understand the nature of what had sort of contributed to the cafe in the coworking space not working out. I had similar questions myself, and as Commissioner Peruzzi eloquently said, it's not necessarily a requirement of this update, but it's very much appreciated for the broader community, and certainly for this planning commission, to understand what market dynamics are. And so along those lines, I have sort of just a couple of follow-up questions, not about the cafe, but about other elements of the development. The letter, the updated developer agreement letter clarified that we're at 100% occupancy for the BMR units, or specifically 20 of 20. When we heard an update When we heard an update last year, it was 18 of 20. So that's great. I'm thrilled that we are at full capacity. Or at least it was 18 out of 20, if my notes are correct. I may stand corrected by somebody who's got the numbers, but I'm pleased to see that we are at 100%. I was wondering if we could hear whether or not there had been turnover in those BMR units over the course of the last year. And then my second question about the BMR units relates to the waitlist that's made reference to. Just curious order of magnitude, how many families or individuals are on that waitlist?
Commissioner Schindler, on both accounts, allow me to follow up with precise data, but my recollection is that of the of the units, of the 20 units that are affordable, we have had turnover. And I think the use of the waitlist versus the lottery system really helped us speed up the releasing of those units, suggesting there certainly is a backlog of demand, but I don't want to misrepresent the scale of it because the lottery system does, in our view artificially amplify the number of folks that apply through a lottery, for example, because we've seen, it's not a consolidated lottery where it tracks in aggregate the number of applicants for all buildings. So for example, if, you know, person A qualified, we wouldn't even know if they qualified or not, having applied. We would have to vet them after they get selected. And they could also apply to every building that has a lottery. So what we found, and I know this wasn't directly your question, but in the first year or two, when we opened up the leasing for these units, we actually struggled significantly. And I think this commission may recall in our updates. And that was more around process, not for lack of demand. And we've spent time with the city staff and with council members in trying to diagnose what really, you know, could have been done to improve that process. The shift from lottery to waitlist was the single biggest unlock for us because people applying and actually being on the waitlist were able to get, you know, pre-qualified essentially by our team. And then we knew they were explicitly looking to be a part of this community, this building, as opposed to sort of doing the shotgun approach, if you will, of, you know, joining a lottery for as many buildings as they can. And so it allowed us to get to those who, you know, qualified and had the desire to move in sooner. And that's allowed us to sort of maintain the full occupancy. But I will circle back through through staff and will provide those two explicit figures for you in terms of the number of units of turnover and then the waitlist length.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. And you actually addressed a question that I hadn't even sort of verbalized yet, which was what the distinctions were, the pros and cons between the lottery system and the waitlist, which was referenced in the letter. So if I'm understanding your comment correctly, you're saying that because a waitlist allows for applicants to be pre-qualified, it actually is a faster process for filling units?
And that's really not even, that alone is not the causal thing. It's just that you then have a direct sort of relationship between the applicant and their desire to be in the building. So when that unit becomes available or is known to then become available, we're not having to go through the lottery and vet folks that may not even have a real bona fide interest, but that just happen to put their name on a lottery. So it's a more direct and efficient, candidly, way of identifying those who want to be a part of the community.
Which, which makes sense to me as you explain it. Then I'm struggling to make sense of the letter, the sentence in the letter that says, "Our goal is to transition back to a lottery system once the existing waitlist has been exhausted."
I think that, and again, I would need to defer to staff and to our leasing team, but my understanding is that the waitlist was an accommodation that was made in order for us to actually address the lease up. But that the mechanism itself may not be the approved sort of city approach, if you will. So, and we're having conversations now with you know, the city staff to figure out how we can improve the overall BMR leasing process for the city, just given that this was one of the larger projects in terms of the number of affordable units that came online at one time. And obviously there's a significant need to address this before we collectively look to deliver, you know, substantially more affordable, much-needed affordable housing, where, you know, we could then potentially have hundreds, you know, of units sit there vacant when we know we have potentially thousands of people that are in need and qualify, but it's a matter of matching them and a process breakdown in preventing them from actually gaining that housing or securing that housing. So we're working through that again with city staff as well as we speak.
Thank you for that additional context and specific color. I think it's relevant to, as you allude to, a lot of things that are in front of the city and potentially eventually in front of this Planning Commission in the future. And if I may, I appreciate your offer to, since you've offered to bring updated turnover and size of approximate, not exact, size of waitlist for the BMR. I did have a follow-up question just about the comparable for the market rate units. If the occupancy for the market rate units is, you know, at 100% or close to 100%, like the BMR units? And if there is also a equivalent magnitude waitlist for the market rate units?
So we are at similar occupancy levels and have maintained those from the point of reaching stabilization. I think there's a couple of unique factors that are driving that, but unlike BMR units, those that can access market rate housing, we found at least in our portfolio, don't have the same time horizon or patience, if you will, to want to sit on a waitlist to try to get into a community. Whereas, because they have more options. And whereas those seeking BMR units have less options from a monetary perspective. And so we'll end up, you know, candidly even finding interim housing solutions until their, you know, their name is called up and they can move into the community. So overall, and when we circle up with the data, I can share this as well, but we find that, you know, your average tenancy on the market rate side is roughly two to three years. Market is about a year to a year and a half, give or take. On average, obviously people stay longer and shorter, but and for the BMR units, it's substantially longer tendencies. That said, there's again, a substantially larger amount of demand in terms of the nominal number of renters seeking market rate units in Mellow Park. Again, but we don't have a waitlist per se that would be comparable to the BMR. So it'd be hard for me to be able to quantify that in a comparative basis for you. All that to say, housing is in tremendous demand and obviously Mellow Park is a fantastic community that a lot of people want to come and live in. And so we just don't have enough, I think collectively, housing supply at an affordable or attainable price point, regardless of whether it's deed-restricted, affordable or affordable by design, or simply just market rate, given the high entry price point of single-family homes and where mortgage rates are today and what percentage down payment of deposits. Lenders are seeking to even grant you, you know, a mortgage. So you know, in our view, apartment living will continue both in the market and affordable sector. Will continue serving a key role in continuing to expand and really make Mellow Park a much more sustainable and well-rounded, complete community.
Excuse me. Thank you. I appreciate both the specific data and also the sentiments emphasizing the importance to the city and to this, this community of having more housing across the pricing spectrums. My final question is also sort of along the themes just of occupancy. The development agreement that requires the implementation of the incubator marketing plan has a condition that's tied to the percent of office space that's leased. So just again, along the theme, what is the approximate lease rate of the office space currently? And is it anywhere near that, that percentage requirement that's tied to having the incubator marketing plan?
Sorry, if I can clarify your question. What's our percentage occupancy in the office?
Yes, I believe there's like a 95% threshold that's laid out in the development agreement that says if you sort of get to that point, the incubator marketing plan is no longer a requirement, if I've read it correctly?
We've fortunately been 100% occupied for at least three years at this point. I mean, we were, we were pre-leased at 100% on the, on the office side. So but that said, one of the first leases we signed was with Canopy, which serves as the incubator, and they have about 10% of the project. So they see substantially more turnover in the sense that their users are smaller. And so that's been a huge success for us and for the community because it's allowed an entry point at a much smaller footprint. So even, you know, one person and a laptop being able to start a company or maintain a company. And we've seen a significant number of new companies, startups get funding and take office space there and then continue to grow. And so despite, again, surpassing the DA obligation from an occupancy perspective, in terms of the spirit of the original commitment, we've continued to be able to foster that and promote that because of how we were able to structure this space. And so candidly, the the request that we will have forthcoming when we come to expand the Canopy space or, you know, have them reclaim back the canteen coffee space is to actually allow for more of that type of function to occur because they do have a extremely long waitlist and which again serves to achieve the goals that we all collectively sought, set out to to commit to upfront, to really promote new company formation and the generation of new ideas and innovation in Mellow Park.
Thank you. I appreciate all that additional commentary as well. I shall look to other commissioners for questions or comments. Commissioner Faric.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I don't really have any more questions, but I do very much appreciate the discussion and all the context and kind of learning about how things are going. And my initial reaction when I read through the staff report was just how nice it is to have this model of kind of shared value for both the developer, the tenants and the community. This is, I feel like, a really great example and it's wonderful just to have that kind of dialogue tonight. So thank you for that. So I don't really have anymore. I'm happy to make a motion, but I don't want to rush through this either. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Faric. Commissioner Sillen, I see you raising your hand here.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the project as a whole. I think as far as the, well, actually, yeah, I do have a question for staff, I think, through the chair. Just looking at these obligations, it really seems like the one, the only one that is not complete, that's ongoing, is sort of a seemingly a very objective obligation where, you know, staff calculates the amount that's due and the developer either provides that amount or not. So while I appreciate the discussion tonight, I'm just wondering if there's, is this item going to keep coming back every year for the Planning Commission for some period of time or after? If this is approved today, does that, well, I understand the obligation continues, but will Planning Commission need to keep reviewing it every year?
Yeah, so there is an obligation to review the DA annually for the 10-year term. I think for future reviews, we can potentially make it briefer since there is just really that one ongoing obligation. But it is a requirement to bring it yearly for the term of the DA.
Got it. And is it within the power of the Planning Commission to change that, to make it like a ministerial item for staff moving forward if we so desired?
Yeah, I believe that's an obligation through the, from the development agreement and it applies to, I believe, all development agreements in the city. So no, I don't believe that's something Planning Commission can change.
Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, going back to my comment, I it's probably easy to tell that I think that from my perspective, at least as a commissioner, I don't see any issues with the development agreement obligations. It sounds like the developer is well aware of what's needed and there's a date here and staff just needs to, you know, assess the amount and see if it's paid by that date. So I'm happy to approve the development agreement. I just wanted to make kind of a additional comment that just being in the public, when I hear friends, residents of Mellow Park talking about new developments downtown or elsewhere, constantly hear people saying, oh, I really like Spring Line, like my place should be like a Spring Line. So I really appreciate all of the partnership with the community. There was an event for Easter that I stopped by with my family that was very popular, very busy, public event just in the fountain area. So that was really nice to see. And yeah, so I just want to say that this project seems to have a lot of support from the community and looking forward to seeing what else will be happening in this space. And since it seemed like no one else had a comment, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the development agreement as stated. But you can still make a comment. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Yeah, please, Commissioner Peruzzi. And then I don't know if Commissioner Doe had some comments as well, too.
I will second the motion, but I also, I'm remembering suddenly that I love to give this feedback to the developer while it's on my mind, because I was also thinking about how much I enjoy Spring Line. But the one thing I don't enjoy is trying to figure out where to park my bike. And I would love to see more accessible and just more bike parking, especially along the Oak Grove frontage, but also on El Camino. Thanks.
All right. I believe we have a first from Commissioner Sillen and a second from Commissioner Peruzzi to adopt the resolution. But I would like, I think we still have a little bit of opportunity for further conversation. Commissioner Doe?
At this point, I don't want to drag this out too long because really my comments are in the spirit of Commissioner Sillen's and Faric. Same friends go to the Easter egg hunt with their young children. And then other friends will say they went to a great talk about climate innovation. So just clearly there's a great range of community amenities. And to Commissioner Peruzzi's questions about the retail and the applicant's reply to that, I often got my favorite brand of beans, beans from the market. And then recently it wasn't there and I noticed there was more chairs in there and less inventory. But I'm glad to hear it's because, it's because of an intentional pivot to offer something that serves a need. So I'm, I'm happy to move ahead with the first and second that we have on the table.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments from commissioners before we do a vote? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and call a vote on the resolution that Presidio Bay Ventures has demonstrated good faith compliance with the provisions of the Spring Line Development Agreement for the of the Spring Line Development Agreement for the last year, roughly. Commissioner Beruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin?
Aye.
I am also a yes. That's five in support of the resolution and two absences. So the resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all of the years of work on this project. Obviously, it's very popular, as you've heard tonight and experienced firsthand. We look forward to seeing you in future meetings, it sounds like.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
All right. We have now moved on from item F1 into item F2. This agenda item addresses the development agreement annual review for the Middle Plaza given by Stanford University. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution that to determine that Stanford University has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the development agreement for the period of April 2024 to April 2025 for the Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real Project. Review of the development agreement does not qualify as a project under CEQA. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there, you are also the leader on this project. Are there any updates to the staff report at this time? And I believe if I'm correct that the applicant is available for questions, but not necessarily going to speak or present?
Yes, that's correct. And I don't have any updates to the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move into public comment on item F2, do any commissioners have clarifying questions about any of the content in the staff report? All right, seeing no requests for clarifying questions, Mr. Pruder, could you please call for public comment on item F2?
Thank you again, Chair Schindler. At this time, we have public comment for item F2, the final public item of the evening. And members of the public in person can provide me with a comment card if they'd like to speak on this item. And subsequently, those on Zoom can press the hand icon to request to speak, as well as those on the phone can press star nine on their keypad. And at the moment, I'm not seeing any comment cards or hands raised. So we could wait a little more or close as you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I am comfortable moving ahead and closing public comment on item F2 and bringing the discussion back to the commission here. And ultimately, to a motion regarding that the developer, in this case, Stanford University, has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the development agreement. Do commissioners have questions or comments, either for staff or for the developer who is here, if we have them? Commissioner Beruzzi?
Through the chair for the developer, I'm curious about, again, not completely relevant to the thing we're voting on tonight, so indulge me though. I'm curious about occupancy rates at this, both housing and commercial. And I'm wondering if you could just share a little bit about the experience with us.
Please, come on up. Can we make sure that we've got the microphone activated, too? All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And you may even want, if you so choose, you may adjust it so you don't, you are comfortable.
Why, thank you. Just to introduce myself, my name is Emily Richardson. I'm the Associate Director at Stanford Real Estate, here to speak about Middle Plaza. So your question?
Oh, yeah.
Emily Richardson.
Thank you.
I'm the Associate Director of Asset Management for Stanford Real Estate, representing Middle Plaza tonight. But your question was about the occupancy for both the residential and the office, correct? So the offices, two of the three buildings are fully leased. One building is fully vacant at this time. We've had some challenges leasing that one, but we do have some progress there. That's the 200 El Camino Building that is adjacent to the Stanford Park Hotel. The residential is Stanford affiliates with eight BMR units. The eight BMR units are 100% occupied, and the remaining project for Stanford affiliates is 98% leased at this time.
Commissioner Beruzzi, did you have a follow-up question? Because if you don't, I do.
I do have a follow-up question, but I'm trying to figure out how to phrase it. So I'm curious, because when we were discussing this development at great length, as you can see from the conditions that we're talking about, one of the things that the public was concerned about was the potential impact on schools. And I'm wondering, so with 98% occupancy and 100% occupancy of the BMR units, do you have a rough sense of how many of the residents might have schoolchildren in the, any of them in Low Park systems? I'm just curious about, I think just for future reference, so we can have a sense maybe of, you know, what actually happens?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't have an exact number, but I have asked about this in the past with our leasing team there on site. There were less than, I want to say, there were only a few handful of children on site. I don't have an exact number, but it's due to the nature that the building is predominantly one bedrooms. There aren't a lot of families that are drawn to the site, per se.
Thank you. I will just piggyback on Commissioner Beruzzi's questions. I had similar. I appreciate that the eight BMR units are 100% occupied. I think if my notes are correct, a year ago, we were at 4%. And I think that was more driven by process, or sorry, four of the units, so 50%. I wanted to just ask a question similar to the one I had asked about Spring Line, which is had there been turnover in those BMR units, to your knowledge, over the last year? And then the secondary question, which is just approximately, you know, how long is the waiting list? And again, and looking kind of for an order of magnitude, is it 10 people? Is it 100 people? Is it 1,000 people? Something like that?
Yeah. I can't speak to the turnover of the units, but we could follow up on that with the leasing team on site. But I can speak to the fact that there currently, according to her manager as of tonight, there were 255 people on the interest list for those BMR units.
Wow, that's a big, 255 is what I understood you to say, on the list for the eight units?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That is very helpful. You've already answered my question about the occupancy for the office space as well. I will, Commissioner Sillin?
Thanks. Yeah, just to piggyback on those questions, could you comment on the occupancy of the, I guess, retail space, please? Thank you.
We actually were able to, or not ourselves, but Alon Restaurant recently opened this year, and so did the Stephen Silver's Fine Jewelry Store. The Alon Restaurant has been wildly popular in the community and actually had a waitlist for quite some time. I don't know if you noticed during the first few weeks of their opening. And the tenants are very happy with their location and really excited to be in the Menlo Park community.
Thank you. So just to clarify, is that space fully leased as well, the retail space?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you. I'm curious if, I'm excited to read that the undercrossing is a step closer this past year to potentially happening. I can see what's in the report here, but can you add any kind of color around, like, how is that going? Are you, is there any concern about government funding sources? Or do you, you know, how's this, what's the sentiment and progress like on the undercrossing project?
I personally don't have much insight into the undercrossing project, but I do.
I can answer that if I'm on.
John.
Sorry. Commission, my name is John Donahue. I'm Senior Director of Planning and Entitlement. Unfortunately, I'm not present in Menlo Park tonight. The requirement with regard to the crossing is, and I think the staff, the staff report did point that out correctly, it's in the realm of the city. Stanford is required to provide funding toward it, but it's essentially up to the city to bring the project along to the point where they can make a request for us to provide our funding. So we've, we've all had fun over the last several years with regard to COVID. And then delay on the crossing was Caltrans, while they're doing the electrification, basically did not allow the city to do much work in that area. That has been completed, and the city has made, I think it's technically called substantial compliance in moving that forward. But I don't believe that they have adequate funding yet. And once they do, they can make the request to Stanford, and Stanford funds our portion.
Thank you. That's helpful kind of process and background.
Do we have other questions from the commission for either the developer team or for our staff here this evening?
Actually, I'll piggyback on my own.
Please, Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you, Chair. This would be for the staff. Ms. Sandmeyer, just kind of, you know, on the subject of the Caltrain, Caltrain Undercrossing, can you comment since it sounds like it is in staff's court, whether this is on, you know, a priority project list or what's happening with it, with the city?
Yeah. So the project is going through the environmental review phase for the NEPA review because it does involve federal funding. And the city is in the process of reviewing proposals for designers. We don't have a specific time estimate at the moment. That would depend on when the design and environmental review are complete and when the funding is acquired.
Thank you. And is it a, is the, is there a council member that is particularly, like, is there, what's the driving forces? I guess I'm not hearing kind of the level of priority for this particular project. And I know it has gone through cycles in the history of 20 years or so I've been aware of it. I'm wondering if there's, you know, current momentum or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a council member specifically working on this, but I know it is, obviously has been an important project for a long time, and it is moving forward and, you know, is very important, of course, for increasing connectivity through the city.
Yep, thank you. Okay.
Commissioner Sillin?
Thanks. I just want to clarify, we're in the discussion portion of the meeting, correct? Since we already did public comment?
We did public comment. Yeah, we did public comment. Yes, we are in general. Commissioner Sillin, you're making me second guess myself. Thank you. It's good. It's good. It's good to occasionally check in on process.
Just confirming. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, so I guess similar to the last item, I just wanted to clarify with staff. So for tonight, as far as the scope of what we're approving, there's a tracking document at the very end of the packet for tonight's agenda. And there are two completed items. There's one item that's the funding for the crossing. And then there's this potential education foundation payment if the payment for the crossing ends up being under the $5 million amount. And that's what's in the scope of tonight's meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Sandmeyer?
Yeah, that's correct. I think, you know, the same as the Spring Line Development Agreement, any part of the agreement could be discussed. But these are the kind of four main obligations that staff identified.
Okay, thanks. So yeah, question for the developer. Again, just kind of juxtaposing with the previous item, there was a lot of discussion of what's going on with the community side of things. And we did touch on the school, the impact of schools. But as far as like retail, it seems like the retail is fully occupied. Could you maybe comment on what, at least so far, I know these businesses just recently opened, but what the reception has been from the public so far? And the plaza that's out front, oh, yeah, in full disclosure, I live probably within 1,000 feet of this space. I don't see the plaza being used very often. So I'm wondering if you have any plans to incentivize more use or anything else for, for the community? Thanks.
So just to public reception of the uses, the restaurant has received a lot of great press and I think a lot of great feedback from the community. I myself am a Menlo Park resident and also live walking distance to the project, both Spring Line and this project. So I've enjoyed it quite a bit. But for the actual use of the plaza, it's publicly accessible. And we've worked on the outdoor seating, the fountain, et cetera, to try to make it a space for people to enjoy. We don't have any active programming at this time, but there are hopes for the restaurant to expand out to the plaza itself, which I've talked to Corinna before about, which will further activate the plaza as well.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Doe?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to go back to Commissioner Farrick's discussion of the Caltrain Undercrossing. In scrolling through the development agreement, it, I don't know if this was discussed because I was looking for it. It says, "The owner shall be relieved of the obligation to make the crossing payment," sorry, "if the term expires without extension." So through the chair, either through to the applicant or staff, I just, I'm a relatively new Menlo Park resident, so hearing that this has, project has been kind of, the Caltrain Undercrossing has been a thing for a long time, it makes me worried. Because what is the terms of the agreement? And what is the likelihood? I mean, we want this to happen. And the undercrossing would help enliven the plaza, right? So I'm just kind of curious to give you a little more confidence that this will come to be.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly a priority. I don't think I can make any guarantees, but I think through the development agreement, the Stanford will be required to pay the share identified once the project reaches the, those milestones identified.
Yeah, if, through the chair, if I can just add context to that, I think those who have spoken earlier, yes, this is, any type of crossing over the tracks has been discussed long before this project came to be. The specific plan really did a good job on behalf of the city to identify and lock down the particular location. And as part of the development agreement, Stanford is the only participant or only property owner within this specific plan who is obligated to fund any portion of that undercrossing. Since we now have, as you heard earlier, 98% of the units of our residential units occupied, we would like to see the construction happening. It will be disruptive when it happens, but we also see the long-term benefit. So we're, we're just as interested in getting that crossing completed as well. To the point of the development agreement, our development agreement expires within 10 years of execution. But there is a provision within our development agreement that if the city is making substantial progress, the development agreement, or at least this element of the development agreement, would be extended additional time to allow the funding to be made by Stanford.
Oh, great. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer for, and to Ms. Jurnay, but thank you both for that clarification.
Commissioner Beruzzi?
Through the chair, I had one last question. So back to the retail for just a minute. And you might have seen this, too, being a Menlo Park resident. But I think when the, when the retailer, Stephen Smith, I think it is, was first announced, there was a lot of lively discussion next door and some other places about, you know, whether or not that was the sort of thing that people might actually use. And I figured there was probably an interesting rationale for, for that choice. And I was curious, again, thinking about the market dynamics and wanting to understand a little bit better what kinds of retail one might expect to thrive in Menlo Park. I was, I don't usually look at like a Safeway parking lot and think this would be a really good place across from which to put a luxury jewelry store. But educate us. I would love to know more.
Yeah, the retail landscape is definitely an interesting one. One thing I would add is that, you know, this retail space is a mix, and it's meant for everyone in the community, which includes people from all different backgrounds and economic status. So we hope to expand and enjoy that as well. The retailer, the Silvers, are actually doing quite well. And they have a strong connection and footprint in the Menlo Park community, actually, and have really enjoyed being a member of the community and have and have received really good feedback from those members. So the restaurant on the other side has also received positive feedback from members of the community, not just here in the park, but beyond, and has drawn those people in, and I think has been a great representation of the plaza.
Thank you. Commissioner Farick?
Thank you. I just wanted, thank you, Commissioner Doe, for pointing out. I had not read the Caltrain undercrossing item in the development agreement itself. It was just one of the earlier pages of the staff report that I was, so thank you for pointing that out because now I'm noting that the agreement was signed in 2017. And so I was, would like to ask Ms. Sandemeyer to please make sure to, ensure that senior staff with the city, Ms. Chow, et cetera, are aware of that so that they don't inadvertently miss a milestone that feels like there's lots of time left to complete when maybe there's not. You know, because we would also want to be good faith in this agreement with Stanford and the developer. So, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments from commissioners at this time? I am a seeing none. So I think this would be an appropriate point in our discussion to make motions, which I will look to my commissioners to do. Commissioner Doe? I'm happy to make a motion to approve as recommended by staff. We have a first from Commissioner Doe to approve the motion regarding the developer, Stanford University, having demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the Development Agreement for approximately the last year. We have a first. And we have a second from Commissioner Beruzzi. Seeing no other requests for discussion, I will go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Farick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillan?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that's five in support of the resolution with two commissioners being absent this evening. Thank you for being here in person, as well as on Zoom. We appreciate the opportunity just to discuss this great project, which I personally drive by pretty much every time I leave my entire, my neighborhood. So, and I enjoy, I have enjoyed the restaurant myself. I'm glad it's there. And I look forward to our update again next year. Thank you. All right, that closes up the public hearing component of our agenda this evening. And I will move us into, gee, the informational items. Ms. Sandemeyer, would you or anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming Planning Commission meetings and agenda items or anything else informational?
Yes, so I have one update. The next meeting will be in one week, on May 5. And there's only one item on the agenda, and that is a use permit and architectural control for a new fitness use at 325 Sharon Park, at that shopping center there. So we will bring that within one week. And then for the next meeting, we haven't identified all the agenda items yet.
Thank you. If my recollection of chronology is correct, it's usually around the end of May that we, as a commission, make a decision about the next chair and vice chair.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, once the appointments are made by city council.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for confirming that vague recollection. Commissioner Farick?
Thanks. And Chair and Commissioners and Ms. Sandemeyer, I will need to be excused on May 19 for a pre-planned work trip to another state.
All right, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about those informational items? All right, seeing no further questions or informational items, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:17. Thank you. Have a good evening.